You're gonna do what?
I, I can't. How did I not get in the front row there?
I don't know. Good evening. Want to thank everyone for coming tonight for the public hearing concerning consolidation for our elementary schools. We'd like to call this meeting of the Granville County Board of Education as a public hearing to order. We do have a quorum. We have six of our seven members. Our seventh member is joining by live stream, so she will be, Ms. Glenda Williams will be listening to the comments as well, as she had already had a previous commitment. Tonight, we'd like to begin with our pledge of allegiance. I'd like to ask Dr. Greg McKnight if he would lead that pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag and to the states of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. McKnight. This evening, our public hearing will deal with the closure studies of Creedmore Elementary and Wilton Elementary. We are focused on elementary schools tonight. We do have a public hearing scheduled for secondary schools tomorrow evening. You are welcome to speak on secondary schools, however, just know that tomorrow will be that night. At this time, I'd like to ask our attorney, Ms. Dubison, to give the guidelines for our public hearing. These are Granville County Public School policy that were set before tonight. Also, when your name is called, you'll step to the mic. There is an X on the floor. We ask that you stand on that X so as to be able to pick you up for the live stream. Do understand that the board will not respond to questions or comments tonight. We do not respond during public comment. The board members are tasked with taking the information they hear from you and learn from you tonight, and they will take that back to their next August 2nd Board of Education meeting for deliberation. So at this time, I'd like to ask Ms. Dubison to give us our policies for tonight.
Thank you. The purpose of this hearing tonight is for the board to receive public feedback on the potential closure of Witton, Wilton Elementary School and/or the potential closure of Creedmore Elementary School. Pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 115(c)-72, local boards of education have the power and authority to close and consolidate schools within their district. Prior to making any decision to close or consolidate one or more schools, the Board of Education must cause a thorough study of such school to be made and must provide for a public hearing at which the public shall be afforded an opportunity to express their views. So today, we're holding that hearing with regard to these elementary schools. The chair will call each speaker by name, and you may address the board for up to three minutes, and I will be keeping a timer. I will let you know when your three minutes has expired. Comments must be on the topic of these school closures. The board will not respond to individual comments in this hearing, but the board will deliberate on this matter in a future public meeting that will be noticed in advance and to which the public may attend prior to making any decision. Anyone who would prefer to submit their comments in writing instead of speaking in today's hearing may send an email to a special address that has been set up, publiccomment@gcs.k12.nc.us, or may drop them off in writing at the central office. And all of those comments will be shared with the board members.
Thank you, Ms. Dubison. Our first speaker this evening for our sign-up is Ms. Sherri Wilkins. Ms. Wilkins, if you'll approach the microphone, stand on the X, state your name and your address for the record, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sherri Wilkins. I am a fifth-grade teacher at Wilton Elementary, where I have been for 20 years. Prior to that, I had my own children that were students at Wilton Elementary, who went through Wilton Elementary, Holly, and South Granville. I am telling you as a parent and as a teacher, I don't think that there is any place better than Wilton. Other schools are great. I'm not putting them down. Don't get me wrong. I think that they're awesome schools. But I want you to stop for one minute and look at scores. I want you to stop for one minute and look at the type of students that are coming out of Wilton. It has nothing to do with their color. It has nothing to do with their academics. It has all to do with what the teachers are doing for them on a daily basis. They are there. They are helping them to strive to do their best every single day and to let them know that we believe in them no matter what. Now, am I saying that doesn't happen at other schools? Absolutely not. But I can tell you from where I am sitting, there's no other place that does that the way Wilton does. For 20 years, I've been there from the very bottom. I started as a TA and a bus driver, working after school. I went from that, went to school at nighttime to get my teaching degree so that I could stay at Wilton Elementary doing that. I was offered other jobs in Granville County Schools at other places, and I would not take them because of Wilton and the kind of staff that they have there for their kids. That's what they're there for. So what I'm asking you to do is to stop and think about these students. I know money is an issue, so let's find something that we can do to help them stay where they are, where they're comfortable, where they want to be, with the people that they want to be with. Don't move them. Don't shatter their dreams and what they're doing, where they're at, and where they're comfortable at because of some money. Let's find a situation where we can keep them where they're at, at every school. Don't close any of them. If it means putting K-6 there, then do that. But do what's best for them, not what's best for everyone else. Let's think about our students, and let's put them first for a change. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilkins. Our next speaker is Ms. Kathy Watkins. Ms. Watkins, if you'll make your way to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Okay, I'm not as tall as she is. Kathy Watkins, 3604 Brassville Road, Creedmore. I also am employed at Wilton. I have been there for 13 years, and I just feel like deja vu. Here we are again. Since I've been at Wilton as a TA and then got moved to the office, every year, Wilton has been on the chopping block. And every year, we have prevailed. And like Ms. Wilkins said, I'd like for you to look at the scores. Look at the community. This is just not a school that people, "Oh, let's just go there because they have smaller classrooms." I understand that. But redraw the lines so we can get more kids. I'm not saying close any school, just like Sherri did, but make it more accessible for these kids to come to our school or come to any Southern End school that they want to go to, Mount Energy, Creedmoor, Tar River, since we're all school of choice. We have a lot of Northern End students. I'm the data manager at Wilton, so I see how many school of choice kids I have. Yes, we have a lot, but that's because they choose to come to us because of our academics, because of our history, because of our score. When you walk in our building, it's like you've just joined a family reunion because that's how we make our parents and our children feel. I see kids every day come in there just looking for a hug, and yes, I know you're not supposed to hug because of COVID. But because of them, and they might not get that hug at home, I'm sorry. Hope I ain't getting in trouble, but I do hug my kids. But just look at the aspects of uprooting these kids. And like Sherri said, if you need to make it a K-6, hey, Wilton will rock it out, just like the other elementary schools will do. Just give us a chance and get us off the table. I mean, we're, I'm tired. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Watkins. Our next speaker is Ms. Karen Dickerson. Ms. Dickerson, if you'll come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Karen Dickerson. My address is 4628 Fairport Road, Oxford. I am a second-grade teacher at Wilton Elementary. I have worked for Granville County Schools, huh, this is my twen-, well, I just finished my 29th year. Eighteen were at Wilton, eleven at West Oxford. I would like to recommend that you keep Wilton open. Wilton is a high-performing school, as Sherri and Kathy have both mentioned. If you look at our scores, they're always great, and that's because of that teacher effort. It's also a leader-in-me school and a lighthouse school. There are about 30 lighthouse schools in North Carolina, and there are lots of leader-in-me schools, but being a lighthouse school takes us a step above and beyond. And that's what we do a lot. We always try to take that step above and beyond what is required. As Kathy was saying, we are a close school. We are like family. We get to know our students, and we work diligently to meet our students where they are. And we work really hard to help them grow as students and leaders. Our mission statement is leadership and learning for today and tomorrow. We strive to do this every day. And I just personally think it would be sad for you as a board to close a school of this caliber.
Thank you, Ms. Dickerson. Our next speaker is Stacy Hockaday. If you'll come to the mic and state your name and your address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Stacy Hockaday. I live at 3692 Kennedy Mill Road, Kitchell, North Carolina. Some of this may seem familiar to you, but I know there are some board members that were not here last fall, and I feel like it's important enough to say again. As an employee of Wilton Elementary School, an alumni of Wilton myself, and a parent of two students who went to Wilton, I'm here tonight to express my deep concern regarding the consideration of closing it. If numbers are what you're focused on, then please consider our test score numbers and the fact that we are a B-ranked school, only a few points away from A. Also, consider the fact that we are an official Stephen Covey Leader-in-me school, one of only a few thousand worldwide. And on top of that, we have the distinction of being a certified lighthouse school, an honor that only about 355 schools worldwide have achieved. My understanding is the school board is considering closing a school as a result of financial issues that our school system is having due to a decline in school enrollment. Okay, so what can we do to fix this problem? First of all, let's work on habit one and be proactive in our problem-solving rather than reactive. No one wants to see a school close, but the decision to close one of your most successful schools in the county seems a little crazy. If you do that, it shows that your priorities are not on the education of our children, but only on money. Yes, our numbers are low, but that's because the way the attendance zone was drawn after Tar River was opened. We have repeatedly asked the county to redraw those lines to correct the problem of our school enrollment numbers, but they never have. We should also focus on habit two, begin with the end in mind, because our end goal is to increase public school enrollment. The main reason our parents tell us they leave to attend a private or charter schools is because they don't want kids, the kids to attend our middle schools. So let's synergize, work together, and start there with plans on ways to improve our middle schools so that people will actually stay. Also, if you choose to close Wilton, you will only be losing more students. In a survey last fall, about 44% of 199 of our parents said that if Wilton closed, they would send their child to a charter or private school. We need to find a way to think win-win and find a solution that will work for everyone. It will take a lot of habit five, seek first to understand, then be understood. But we ask the board to reconsider closing our school. Instead, try to understand what is best interest of our students. We must put first things first and put our students first. Our students and families deserve to have their educational needs put first, not to be just a dollar sign. Wilton has repeatedly proved that we are a successful school, preparing our students to be leaders in the future. The seventh habit to sharpen the saw was about finding balance. We need for the board to find a balance between cutting costs yet preserving our students' most important educational needs. Lastly, there is actually an eighth habit called Find Your Voice and inspire others to find theirs. The students at Wilton Elementary School are young leaders who are growing and succeeding. They are not mere numbers. Don't try to silence our students. Help them find their voice instead. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hockaday. Our next speaker is Ms. Emily Wright. Ms. Wright, if you'll make your way to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Emily Wright, 3633 Ashton Glen Lane, Oxford, North Carolina. My name is Emily Wright, and I'm a proud former Wilton Wildcat. I attended Wilton Elementary School from 2006 to 2012. I can truly say that my, that of my 13 years in the Granville County Public School system, those I spent at Wilton were by far the best, most formative, and impactful years. As a former student, I felt strongly about voicing my opinion to you all concerning closing Wilton. As I am no longer a Granville County school student, any decision you make will obviously not affect me, but it will affect many children in my neighborhood and my community. Right now, I'm currently on the path to become a pediatrician and will be working with children every day. I want the children I work with, who are the future of our community, our country, and our world, to have the same strong educational foundation I found at Wilton. To this day, I still remember the feeling of having teachers and administrative staff that supported me and cared about my well-being and academic success. That feeling wasn't just for me. It was for every student that is lucky enough to walk through the doors of Wilton Elementary School. I still use the test-taking strategies that I was taught in my third-grade class on my organic chemistry exams. I still have all of my Field Day t-shirts. Every time I hear "Don't Stop Believing by Journey," I still think of my fifth-grade class. When my parents chose to enroll me in Wilton Elementary School, it was not a six-year decision. It was a 60-year decision, as the foundation I gained here will last me a lifetime. In that same light, deciding to close the best, and I say that best, elementary school Granville County Schools has to offer will impact generations of children, children that go through the school system. As a student in Granville County Schools, I was driven and determined to work hard in my grade, in all grade levels and to be the best student I could be. I think I achieved that and went from Granville County Schools to my dream school at UNC Chapel Hill. My success thus far and the success of hundreds of other Wilton alumni is fueled by the support we got at Wilton. But if my words cannot persuade you, or the words of Kathy and Sherri and Ms. Hockaday and Ms. Dickerson, let the numbers speak for themselves. Wilton Elementary School is ranked number one among public non-charter schools in Granville County. It has a nine out of 10 stars on Carolina School Hub and received an 88.4 student growth, exceeding student growth. The fact that you would even consider closing a school with these performance statistics is absurd. The students and families of Granville County Schools do not deserve to have the opportunities, support, and family that Wilton offers ripped away from them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. Our next speaker is Ms. Kathy Jenkins. Ms. Jenkins, if you'll make your way to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
I can't breathe. This hasn't come. My name is Kathy Jenkins. I live at-
Ms. Jenkins, if you can step a little bit closer on that X there.
Maybe this would help. My name is Kathy Jenkins. I live at 2855 Grove Hill Road. I am a mother, a grandmother, an aunt, a friend, a neighbor. I am a strong advocate of education, have always been, will always be, which is why I'm here tonight. I want to say ditto to everybody here who has spoken ahead of me. They have already covered most of what I have to say, but ditto on Wilton School. I'm a Wilton School kid, okay? That was a few days back, okay? I understand that change has to take place. I understand that change needs to take place, and I understand that there is change that needs to take place now. Wilton Elementary is your number-one school. Creedmore Elementary is a restart school. I'm going to leave it at that, okay? The other thing that I want to be sure to cover in my three minutes is this. Talk to your commissioners, because they're behind this great push to close schools, and it's about money, people. It's about money. And we're getting money from the COVID from here to kingdom come. Why do we have to do this now? Why can we not spend more time? We're going in circles. We started out looking at high schools. We took that off the list. Now one's back on the list. We have a middle school. We're trying to figure out what to do with it. And I know it's not tonight that's for that, but you can't leave all of this stuff out in talking about elementaries where this all begins. Now, I know I sound really aggressive, but I want you to know that this is about passion. This is not about aggression. I want to make sure that I'm heard, because I feel like what I have to say really does is important, and I hope that it does matter to a lot of people. And as long as I have children in school, grandchildren in school, I don't have children in school. I'm too old for that. I have grandchildren in school, but it won't be long. But as long as I'm around, I'm going to still be here because what we need is strong schools in Granville County. These children deserve it. My children deserve it. Your children deserve it. Every child deserves it, and they deserve better than what they're already getting, and they deserve better than what we're looking at now. And I have said it more than once, and I'm going to say it again, and probably again and again. Let's get to the root of the problem in the school system. Let's not play around with everything but the truth. But you got to go after it to get it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jenkins. Our next speaker is Ms. Stephanie Allen. Ms. Allen, if you'll make your way to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
I'm a little taller than Ms. Jenkins. Hang on. I'm Stephanie Allen. Live at 2126 North Carolina Highway 96, Creedmoor, North Carolina. I want to thank you to the parents, to the family members, to the teachers, to the guidance counselors, to all the people, the data manager that are here supporting Wilton today. These are the faces of the people you're going to be impacting. In a 2019 ABC 11 news article related to the closing of Mary Potter and Joe Toller, the district blamed lagging public school enrollment on the growing number of parents choosing charter schools. Closing an elementary school is not going to solve the problem of parent choice, blaming the charter's only results in these elementary schools being the casualty. My husband and I teach our kids not to be the victim. We don't blame the sidewalk when we trip or stumble. We don't blame the umpire when we don't like the rules of the game, and we don't blame the other team when we lose. We take accountability for mistakes, learn from our failures, talk about what we'll do differently going forward. Wilton's Leader-in-Need program emphasizes this school of thought by assigning the students accountability partners. Starts in kindergarten. There's an expectation to show your partner what you accomplished the week prior, what you learned. My understanding of accountability within this public school system is that the administration is accountable to this Board of Education, that the board's responsibility is to ask the hard questions around student retention, teacher retention, principal, assistant principal retention. All of these numbers related to the categories are decreasing in our county, but no one's taking accountability, promoting what we're learning from the mistakes and what we're going to be doing differently. Let's talk about what is working, and that's Wilton Elementary. Let's look at the five core values from our Granville County Public School Strategic Plan. Learning, growth, leadership, creativity, relationships. Wilton meets or exceeds growth and academic performance. You've heard the numbers. We have the Leader-in-Need program, establishing leaders at the age of five. When interviewing the teachers about why they stay at Wilton, they say because of the family, because of the relationships. You talk about retention. How long has Ms. Atkins been involved at Wilton? Expectations are made clear, and feedback is given when goals are not met. Wilton currently has 100 students who are districted to another school, yet they choose to attend what an elementary school. Taking away their choice school, we can just go ahead and assume these families are going to leave the district. They're going to attend private or charter. It's another $200,000 out the door, pass-through revenue. We have an opportunity to take a deep dive and figure out why these families are choosing to attend Wilton, but we're not studying what's right. All we're doing is closing the doors to one of the highest-performing elementary, elementary schools in the county. The rhetoric has not changed since 2019. The video message from the board last month echoed the exact same message we heard three years ago in that article. When is this board going to hold the administration accountable for declining enrollment? When is this Board going to hold the administration accountable for declining enrollment? There's a quote from Stephen Covey's Seven Habits of Highly Effective People. "The voice of conscience is so delicate that it's very easy to stifle, but it's also so clear that it's important to mistake it." What is your conscience telling you about the closing of this school?
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Next, our next speaker is Andrea Stein. Ms. Stein, if you'll make your way to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Andrea Stein, I live at 1078 Timberwood Drive, Franklinton. And first of all, I want to applaud all of you that have been up here. I know some of you know me, some of you don't. We moved here about 14 years ago and three of my kids attended Wilton. My last one came here at Tar River. And not a day goes by where I loved Wilton, absolutely loved it, they were great for the kids. And I don't regret moving my other ones over here. But I just want to say, old doesn't mean get rid of, it means tradition. And what they all stood for, it's tradition, it's what these kids need. And all I have to say is I applaud you all, I applaud you. Please, please just hear them, just hear them and do what's right for these kids. Smaller is better, it really is, because when the classrooms get too large, the kids don't get that one-on-one time they need. And I've seen it happen where my kids have transferred from Wilton to Holly and the classrooms got really, really packed. They didn't have that one-on-one time. And I do, I love Wilton. Would I go back? Absolutely, in a heartbeat. But smaller is better, so please do not look at them as, you know, just because the numbers are going down. It's always better one-on-one with the kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stein. Our next speaker is Ms. Anna Elliott. If you'll come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Anna Elliott, I live at 2486 Patton Lane, just down the street. We've lived here for 17 years. I have a 15-year-old daughter, a 12-year-old daughter and an eight-year-old daughter. And I am, we are that family that has never been in Granville County Schools. I personally, from my own experience in public school, have a big mistrust of government-run schools. I don't mean any offense to the teachers, but I swore when I graduated high school that my children would not go through what I went through. So I literally can almost see Wilton Elementary from my house, but for nine years, we drove, eight years, no, none, all the way to Wake Forest to go to Thales Academy. I did that because of our middle school and high school. I wanted my children in a system where they already were and were established and I didn't have to worry about middle school. And pre-pandemic, right before the pandemic, we had decided to pull them out. I had met lots of teachers like these lovely ladies. We'd started going to church down the street. I met lots of them and I finally got to a point where I felt comfortable and I felt like they would be loved and cared for and that they would not be learning ridiculous things like I learned in school. And so we made the decision to put them in public school and then the pandemic happened and we decided that we were not going to subject them to virtual learning and math, so I took the sacrifice, I quit my job and I homeschooled because of that. It's been a tumultuous year, but my two oldest are ready to go back to public school and so is my son and we're slated to go to Wilton. Unfortunately, all three of the schools that my children are slated for are on the chopping block. So I picked a fine time to jump into this. But as of right now, if you close Wilton, I'm not going to put him in there. I am going to homeschool again. Honestly, I was quite surprised at the last meeting that I watched online at the surprise that some of you guys had of people being upset and wanting Creedmoor to close because of lower scores. As a parent, I don't want my kid going to a lower-grade school. The fact that Wilton is on the chopping block with Creedmoor blew my mind as an outsider going in. I've heard nothing but good things about Wilton the 17 years we have lived here. Never had a kid in there, nothing but good. I've heard not-so-great things about the middle and high schools and we were finally comfortable with that. And it blew my mind, honestly, that this is even a topic, that you would close this school. It makes no sense to me. Wilton should be a model for the rest of the county, for other schools in the state. Why would we, why would we take something that is working so well and close it? As an outsider looking in at this point, it truly baffled me. And I'm feeling disappointed and frustrated as someone, you know, who's ready to come into the public school and I can't. So at this point, so I hope that you guys choose to keep it open and I hope you liked hearing an outsider as to why we chose to not attend these schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Elliott. Our next speaker is J.C. Georgian. If you'd step to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Hello, I'm J.C. Georgiev, 1174 Smith Creek Way, Wake Forest. I have a very different approach on this. I have lived here for five years. I have two children who had attended Tar River up until last year and they're now in a public charter that they love and I love and there is no comparison. And what else? I'm also a broker-owner of a firm. I live in the South Granville area, so we're very underserved there. We really don't have a middle school or a high school that isn't 30 minutes away and we have three elementary schools all within a 10-minute radius of one another. So my passion is really tomorrow night. But the one thing I will say is that I was a volunteer. I volunteered a lot of hours to Tar River, I was on the pack for Tar River and this is a great school building. I think the turnover is very high and Wilton is a really fantastic school with a B-plus rating, last I checked. And it seems senseless to close a school with that much collateral and loss. I think that your backs are up against the wall and I get that you guys have to make a decision. I think that, really, sorry, I'm struggling here. I think that one of the proposals I would have is to close Wilton and move the curriculum, because I watched your hearing the other day and they said that it's retroactive, so you could move the curriculum to Tar River. So that would be my proposal, is to keep the curriculum, the students and merge the schools into either Tar River or Mount Energy. The other thing, and I know you can't answer questions, I tried to do my own research, but we know that this is a commissioner thing and I guess my other proposal would be to look at redistricting to Wake County for Wilton, have it encompassed in Wake County South, since Granville County really can't seem to afford South Granville, we're underserved, and move us into Wake County where Wilton can stay and remain. Granville County gets the whatever amount to sell the school and then you guys are out of deficit, so that hopefully you don't have to close Holly. What else? I don't know that you guys know the number of children that are currently in public charter that are going to feed into the high school. So it's a situation where, I mean, I know that you guys have to do something, but I would really love to help with fundraising. I don't feel like any of us have ever been, you know, asked to fundraise. So if there was a way to keep the school open by fundraising, I think we would all be for it. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Georgiev. Our next speaker is Ms. Linda Edwards. Ms. Edwards, if you'll come to the mic, state your name and your address for the record.
Good evening, my name is Linda Edwards and I live in Oxford, North Carolina. I came to find out what the people were thinking. Most of them know, well, I saw some people from last year, but the Board and most of you know I'm mostly about Holly, being that that's my family's school, my grandfather. But I did want to come to hear what the people had to say. I personally love Creedmoor Elementary and that's probably because I worked at South Granville and my students used to work with those students, teaching them things about art and the way I taught art was across the board. So a project may, excuse me, incorporate science, literature, writing, band, because I know what I'm doing, so I made sure they had a great project. I don't have anything against Wilton. I worked for the county also for many, many years and Tar River was not here. I was here when they built it, I was here. Wilton got a rehab thing going, all the schools need rehab. And what I want to say to the people here, and if I don't mean to be rude, but if I turn, I'm going to lose the mic. I think you need to take all you saying to the county commissioners. It is not the school, I've got issues with them too, don't think I don't. I've got issues, but I know how to work out my issues with them because I come from an education family. Everybody in my family was a teacher, back during segregation, Jim Crow, Jane Crow, all of that. So I'm looking around the room and I'm the only one in here? Did anyone know about that right there? So all of y'all are right and then there's place for you to take your anger to the county commissioners, because I know for a fact they denied Dr. McLean and this school board the money they need to fix the retirement problem, to upgrade these schools. Holly is in the condition it is in because for 10, 15, 20 years, 30 years, they have not given this school board, whether it's these people or the one, I've been here a long time, I am 59 years old. And I grew up here with my grandparents. So all of your anger and all of this stuff y'all throwing up here at this school board, you need to go to the county commissioner meeting and you need to demand, because they just got $11 million in COVID money. I'm going to tell you the truth, because they're not telling you. They're putting a roundabout in Oxford, I don't know where they got that money from. We don't need a roundabout, they could have put four-way stop. They letting all, and it's not just Holly that's in need. Creedmoor needs stuff. So I worked at South Granville, I know the roof leaks, I know the AC does not work. I know there's a mold issue, it's still probably there. Same thing at Cradle, same thing at all the other schools. So it's not just that Holly has been let go. And it's not that you all are wrong and my time is up and I don't want to be rude, because that is not the way I do think, because I do respect these people, because I know what kind of fire they are under and I know what kind of fire the school board is under. So I'm just telling you all, it is nothing wrong, I think it's good you're here, but please go to the county commissioners and tell them to give Dr. McLean the money, because she is busting herself and her faculty to get this stuff done. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards. Our last speaker on the list tonight is Ms. Danielle Hayes. Ms. Hayes, if you'll make your way to the microphone, state your name and your address for the record, please.
Danielle Hayes, 2094 Creekside Drive, Franklinton, NC. So respectfully, ma'am, I have to disagree. When the school board goes to the county commissioners with a priority list of your top five things and the county commissioners agree to give you the top four things, it's not the county commissioners always saying no. Our tax money is not a bottomless pit, okay? There are priorities. Now, after talking to many parents, staff and community members, it has become increasingly clear by all the people here that the majority of South Granville area is opposed to the closing of Wilton. It's not hard to see, but why specifically? Wilton Elementary has been consistently ranked Granville County Public Schools' highest-performing elementary school for years. The Leader in Me program, which took five years to establish, complete staff training and become accredited, has cultivated a robustly successful learning environment here in Southern Granville County. But you know all of that already. So what I haven't heard considered is why the Board would choose to close down our most successful elementary school when you guys are trying to balance a budget while simultaneously building a brand? Aren't we trying to bring kids back into Granville County public schools? Wilton Elementary should be our flagship, it should be our crown jewel, it should be the thing that we're most proud of. It's one of our smallest campuses with a very successful program, rigorously trained staff and a thriving student body that our community is extremely proud of. And I don't even have kids that go to Wilton Elementary. My kids went to Tar River. We need to stop trying to keep up with the likes of Durham and Wake County Schools and instead work with who we are and what we already have right here in Granville County. With a total of about 7,000 students, we're small and quaint and local and judging by the survey results, parents overwhelmingly want traditional. That was really clear. After last year, teachers, parents and students alike have had enough technology and screen time to last them forever. Instead of the Board asking, "How can we reimagine learning?", we should be getting back to the basics. Parents want a return to small-town schools like Wilton. We want the three Rs, reading, writing and arithmetic. Less one-to-one laptop ratios and more pencil and paper worksheets. Cursive writing so our kids can learn how to read historical documents and sign their names and maybe even a home economics class. Actually, this situation is a lot like a home economics assignment to build a grocery budget. Our schools are the meals and Wilton Elementary is the spaghetti and salad dinner that everyone in the family loves. Why would we ever take it off the menu if we didn't have to? Its great test scores and location in the area of our county that is actually growing, check the most important budget boxes. It employs community members, draws tax-paying home buyers, raises local home values and invigorates the local economy, like the gas station that wasn't there eight years ago, or Wilton Pizzeria, or the Dollar General that's been built. We need to cut the fat for sure, but which school campus isn't carrying their weight? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hayes. Again, we'd like to remind you that tomorrow evening, the Board has another public hearing scheduled for this same place at the same time, 6:00 PM. At that point, we will be taking public comment on our secondary schools. Again, if you would rather not speak, you may submit a written comment to publiccomment@gcs.k12.nc.us by the end of the week and that will be forwarded to the Board for their consideration. Again, thank you for this evening, for your time, your passion and again, thank you for the opportunity to serve you as the school board. At this time, if there's no further information, Board, I would take a motion to adjourn. All right, we have a motion by Ms. Anderson, do we have a second? We have a second by Dr. Houlihan. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. This public hearing is dismissed.